Newmarket School Board, we're conducting this meeting again through the emergency provisions pursuant to RSA 91A2. 3B, Executive Order 202004, Section 8, and Emergency Order Number 12, Section 3. As we have to do at the beginning of all of these meetings, for those who are participating, we'd ask that you state your name by roll call. We'll have the board go first, and whether or not you have anybody in the room with you. This is Mike Kennison, and there's nobody with me.
Elizabeth McKinney, and there's no one with me.
Kim Shelton, no one with me.
Gary Swanson, I'm alone.
Amy Tilden, alone.
And can we have the rest of folks present do a roll call as well?
Taylor Kennison, and I'm alone.
Dave Jack, and I'm alone.
Erica McNeil, and I'm alone.
Sherry Pohopek, and I'm with my husband.
Susan Raymond, and I'm alone. Whoops.
Sean Pine, I'm alone.
I think that is it. It's all I can see. Thanks, everyone. So, according to meeting order, the first order of business is any public comment. Susan, I haven't received any public comment by email.
Sorry, I got dropped off. Susan, given that I'm alone.
Hi, Susan. I just mentioned we're on to a public comment. I was just mentioning, I didn't receive any. I don't know if you have.
No, we did not receive any.
Okay. Well, then let's get into the agenda. The first item on TAF is recognition of retirees.
Yes. So, we have five of our longstanding staff members who are retiring this year. And all with a whole host of years. Susan Raymond, speech pathologist, 17 years. Kathy Cornell, who is not able to join us tonight, second grade teacher, has been with us for 25 years. Linda Saliga, her math tutor, who is here tonight, has been with Newmarket for 32 years. And Sherry, let's see if I can say it right. Not gonna, no. I practiced it. Did I do it? Pohopek has been with us for 33 years and also a graduate of Newmarket. And Brian O'Connor, who was the head custodian, was here with us for 34 years, and Brian is not able to join us tonight either. So, I've asked Erica and Sean to share a few memorable things about each of them for us tonight. We also, the board, has purchased bowls for everyone, crystal bowls for everyone. But they unfortunately have not all arrived. So, when they do arrive, we will be sure to make sure everybody gets their bowl for their education, devotion to education over all the years they've been here. So, with that, I will turn it over to Sean. And when he's done sharing with us a few thoughts on each, then Erica will do the same.
Thank you, Susan. And thank you, Board, for giving us the opportunity to recognize the retirees of the district. I'm fortunate, yet unfortunate, four of the five retirees are coming from the Newmarket Elementary School. Of those four, combined totals of commitment to working for the school district is over 108 years of service in some way. Linda Saliga, math instructor, tutor, extraordinary, 32 years. She started at the elementary school when it was the old St. Mary's building where now the SAU and Town Hall are set up. She had, did one year where she worked with the reading department, but it was not really her thing. She's a numbers woman. So, she worked with Title I and then moved to a math instructor tutor position. She has two sons that went through the Newmarket School system as well. You know, everyone that I can say very honestly, Linda is just a fantastic role model for everyone that was in the building, myself included, always a good person to talk to and kind of get the vibe of what's going on. And I highly appreciated candid conversations we had together. Highly respected member of not only Newmarket Elementary School, but the Newmarket community in general. Always respectful, caring, and supportive of all the kids. She really had, has, I'm not going to say had, she really has a unique knack of connecting with kids when it comes to mathematics. Also, kind of lighter now, Linda, I don't know who's going to supply my hot ball supply in my office anymore, but remember, you can always drop those off anytime. But we do truly thank you, Linda. It's, you know, I've only had to work with you for six years, fantastic six years. You're an extraordinary woman, and you're going to be sorely missed. And we don't want to make you a stranger at all, so.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah. Susan Raymond, 17 years. We still kind of have a string on her pee toe. She's not leaving us completely. But, you know, much like Linda, highly respected by all the members of our learning community and also the community in Newmarket. She always goes above and beyond in her commitment to supporting not only the students, but supporting the staff. She worked closely with classroom teachers of how to, you know, work in language therapy into the classrooms as well. She is known for her lunch bunches that she did with the kiddos, and it was a really great way for the students, you know, really impacted the students, not only in terms of developing their speech skills, but also social and academic skills as well. She is truly committed to the students, not only within the confines of being a speech therapist, but she also would step up, and she was our cross-country, one of our cross-country coaches for many years, part of the climate committee. And, you know, whenever this event needed support, Susan was there. I should put that to Linda as well. I'm sorry, left that out, Linda. But, you know, again, a true honor to work with Susan. You know, we're not letting her go completely. We're going to still see her bouncing around a little bit in the district, but, you know, it's hard to fill shoes of both Linda and Susan, that's for sure. And we will try our best, but, you know, we look forward to hearing about all your adventures that you have in your retirement. And, you know, don't be strangers. Kathy Cornell, who isn't here with us tonight, she is retiring from Newmarket after being a classroom teacher for 25 years. She actually started her intern, as an intern at Newmarket Elementary School. She recently was part of the teacher leadership team. She kind of ran, helped us run with science and getting us up to speed with next generation science standards. You know, it was always wonderful to go into her classrooms. The kids were highly engaged. A lot of one-on-one and small group instruction took place in there. You know, she dedicated a lot of times to mentoring other teachers. Again, a person I could turn to and have very candid conversations about what's going on, what can I work on to improve the building? And what as we as a community can do to improve the building. She a lot of work with the kids outside of school. She did an after-school walking club. She did a yoga club for kids in her classroom. She was the spearhead to put together our annual Christmas craft fair. And again, she was one that really kind of took a lot of our younger teachers under her wing and provided them with some valuable tips and guidance. And her commitment to the district is incredible, and she will be sorely missed. And again, Kathy, I know hopefully you'll see this in the recording, we're going to miss you tremendously. And, you know, we wish you well on your next stage of life. And finally, Brian O'Connor. Brian is the last of the O'Conners in the Newmarket School District, 34 years. He too started at St. Mary's, which is now the SAU building. A little known fact, or I guess some people know, his father was actually the principal of Newmarket Elementary School for 35 years. His mom, Rita, was a third grade teacher at Newmarket Elementary School for 31 years. So, between the three of them, over 100 years of service to the district in some fashion. Although Brian grew up in Durham, he had very strong roots in Newmarket. One of the first things I can remember, when the first day I started the job at Newmarket Elementary School, Brian came up and gave me a big slap on the back and said, "Do you remember me?" And we sat and looked at each other, and then I realized we actually went to elementary and middle school together in Durham, so. A little tidbit there. And I kept telling him on retirement, I was going to post some pictures of him with hair when he was a kid, but I'll save him from that. You know, Brian just took so much pride in the work that he did. The building was always impeccably maintained. He really knew what was going on. He had great connections with local vendors, great ability to kind of troubleshoot things. He was there. It could be 10 o'clock at night, 1 o'clock in the morning, if something was wrong at the building, Brian was there. He, I kind of call him the unofficial mayor of Newmarket Elementary School. Because I think he's, you know, he was a good sounding board for a lot of people. Kids loved him. He just had a really strong relationship with everyone there, really nice sense and easy, sense of humor, very easygoing. He was also, he and Randy Critchett, they were the recipients of the first Golden Shovels Award when we had feet in feet of snow three or four years ago. And, you know, that's just the attention. I mean, he was up on that roof in freezing weather, shoveling off six, seven-foot snowdrifts. His commitment to the, to the building was just incredible. And you don't see that a lot. And, you know, he played a key role in helping our community not only bond together, but also kind of letting us, you know, letting us have someone that had a lot of good, good, good knowledge about the town and good knowledge about the school itself. And he will be missed, and we wish him luck wherever he goes. I hear he's been doing a lot of golfing, and we'll catch up to him someday on the course. So, those are the four retirees of Newmarket Elementary School. Again, thank each and every one of you for your commitment to the Newmarket community, Newmarket School District. You will be missed, but we are not going to let you go. We expect you to come back and see us. And anytime you want to volunteer and come in, the door is always open to you. And good luck, and keep us posted on all the adventures that you have.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean, and thank you on behalf of the board to everyone who's with us tonight. I won't tell you how old I was when some of you started, but it brings a perspective. I was still in high school for some of this. And there was no, when some of you started, there wasn't a, the elementary school wasn't there. I think that was in 87 or 86, around there. Yeah, so it's incredible to see. It's rare too, in this age, to see such long tenures of people. That's pretty neat. And we've all benefited from your dedication, so thank you very much. We wish you the best in your next chapter.
Okay, we'll now have Erica make some comments regarding Sherry.
So, Sherry Pohopek started her career in the Newmarket School District as a paraprofessional on September 1st, 1987. She, in 2000, took over as the Special Education Secretary and has been in that role for the past 20 years. However, Sherry is also a lifelong resident of Newmarket and graduated from the Newmarket Junior Senior High School. Her coworkers describe her as one of the kindest, most thoughtful people this district has ever had.
Erica, unfortunately, I think we completely lost her.
She said something about the kindest person the district has ever had.
Person who does the sunshine.
I heard that.
That's been my experience.
Mine too.
So, we have been lucky enough that she has served the Newmarket community for 33 years, and she is going to continue serving the community by helping transition into a new role. The special secretary role is a very unique position. It's not something where, you know, you have a lot of people who have that kind of experience. So, we're really lucky that Sherry is willing to kind of stick around and train the next person for that role. But we are going to miss coming in and seeing your smiling face every single day. I hope you and John enjoy time at the camp this summer, but I will continue to call you and hopefully share a bowl of faux, or faux.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sherry.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Sherry, thank you. Enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry, on behalf of the board as well. We appreciate your tenure and hope you have a great summer, a great, great retirement, and thanks for sticking on to help us with the transition. Your service has been invaluable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And your sense of humor, of course, Sherry. Your loveliness will be missed very much.
Thank you. I, I, I will miss, I will miss everybody for sure.
Thank you. Hey, we're, I think there's some, uh, there's some slowness tonight with the, uh, online meeting thing. I'm, I'm not catching everything everybody's saying, but, thanks everyone again. And, um, so I guess, uh, the next thing on the agenda is the, um, student representative report. Taylor.
Hi. So this should be my last support before the summer ends, but, um, athletic director, Mr. Hayes sent out an email about registering for sports in the fall. Also grades were published yesterday for all three schools. High school students have until June 19th this week to return any books to the school. So, um, SATs dates have been rescheduled now and they're posted on college boards. Some upcoming dates are August 29th, September 26th and October 3rd, and students can register online right now for them. There are multiple committees meeting right now to prepare for the upcoming school year and I'm, I'm actually a part of one of those. I'm part of the Student Family and Community Life Committee. Along with eight other students, um, and also teachers, parents and administration. We had our first meeting about a week ago and we decided at the end of the meeting, we would look back at the data gathered by the survey sent out to students, teachers and parents and predict barriers, um, we might experience in the upcoming school year as well as come up with what is important to student life in the upcoming school year. So that's all I have and have a nice summer, everyone.
Okay. Thank you for that. And, um, in terms of school board committee reports, um, just one note on facilities, we're gonna, we rescheduled to have our last meeting instead of June. Have it in, um, July 14th. It's at 5 o'clock. We're hopeful to have it at the school itself. Uh, if feasible, if we can do it and, and guidelines allow at that time. So we can give the, the committee an opportunity to, um, see all the, the fruits of all their hard work. At that point. There's really nothing new on the, on the building front itself. Again, there's still just punchless items, um, to be done. Dave Jack went over last week, the, the warrant article items that are, uh, either, uh, have been bid out or, or we've already approved. So there's nothing on that front. I don't think there are any reports from any other committees as far as I know. With that, um, I guess we'll move on to Susan. Susan, take it away.
Thank you. So just a couple of, uh, noteworthy items. Of course, everyone knows that yesterday was our last day with staff. We had a great week together. We began, um, each day with, um, an hour of wellness. And during that hour of wellness, we, um, learned some tools that we can use that can be used in the classroom as well as, uh, personally to help reduce anxiety and, uh, stress. So, uh, that was, you know, a really wonderful time that we could share at the end of a very challenging year. Uh, in addition, the nurses, uh, reviewed protocols, um, for our new norm here. We had some staff members that elected to come in and so we were able to practice some of these norms, including taking temperatures and asking all of the questions, um, that are required before you can enter a building. We went and reviewed masks and, you know, how to put them on properly and social distancing and why, and there were a whole host of questions asked and it was a great opportunity for us to start to process, um, some of this, some of these protocols so that, uh, we have a better sense of, of, of what that experience, uh, might look like when we return. And then, uh, there was time spent in the buildings, um, evaluating, you know, where's, where kids landed, you know, identifying some competency gaps. And then reflecting on remote learning, you know, uh, what went well, you know, what, what might we do? Next year, what kinds of things did we learn and how might we incorporate those into our practice? And then of course some planning for the year. And then the last, um, two hours of the day were spent, um, doing some of our, uh, mandatory training. Typically that training is done at the beginning of the year. And, um, and it's not done at the beginning of the year for any, uh, reason other than whoever your new staff is can, uh, participate together. Though over time, a lot of that training is done remotely and was before, uh, we got into our remote learning situation, but, this frees up 10 hours worth of mandatory training that we then won't have to do at the beginning of next year for the entire staff. So we can focus on reentry. So it was a great five days. It ended with a little social distancing picnic. More staff showed up for that. We all sat on blankets that were distanced apart and enjoyed a sandwich and, and I think it was the, a nice way to end the year. So in addition to that, um, yesterday I learned that, um, one of our employees received the pop, pop-off, uh, award from the Newmarket Community Education Partnership. And the recipient of that award in our school department was Lyndy, Linda Hoppy for, uh, all of her work feeding our families during this pandemic. So, we're really excited that, uh, Linda was recognized for her contributions to the community by, um, Market Community Educational Partnership. And then the last item tonight is just, uh, to let folks know. Of course, we said we would have the schedules done for the kids before the school year ended and then we changed when the school year was going to end. So we're actually still on target to, to meet that deadline. It's, it's just, uh, that again, the school year ended earlier, uh, than I, than our timeline accommodated. But, uh, the, the high school students will receive their schedules tomorrow. And the middle school schedules are, are almost complete, but we want to go through and, um, check through one more time to make sure that, uh, everything, uh, is in order there before we send those out. So the middle school schedule will go out to students, um, before the end of the month. So I just wanted to let everyone know, in case people were wondering, we did say, uh, by the end of the school year. Um, and I just wanted to mention it because folks will think, will not remember necessarily that the end of the school year was going to be June the 25th. Not June the 10th for the students and 17th for the staff. So just wanted to let you know that before we close the year. And that includes my report.
Susan, thanks for that report. Um, any questions from the board? Quiet tonight, huh? Okay. Well, um, Dave, I think you're up to bat on the, um, financial report. We have some bids and, uh, a joint agreement on the splash pad.
Good evening. I just bring you up to date as far as where we were, uh, on June the 12th in terms of our financials. This time of year, I, I tend not to wait till we get to a end of the month. I tend to grab the, the last position so that we can, uh, keep people posted as to where we are at that particular point in time. And over the next several weeks, we'll, we'll finish up the year. We'll be closing out FY 20, uh, as, as, as we speak, our auditors were already in today to, uh, begin to collect data for the end of the year and to, uh, to start the audit in a more timely fashion so that, uh, we can get all the numbers that we need to the state on time, uh, for September 1st. So, uh, the process did start today, even though we're not finished out and it will continue, uh, toward the end of July. So right now, I, I think that at the last meeting, we talked about, uh, the revenues, uh, where we were. Actually, uh, as of June the 12th, we had about $106,000 worth of revenues above and beyond what we expected. So those monies will be added, if you will, to the end of the year, going back to, uh, the unreserved fund or, uh, actually being used to set the tax rate as we go forward. And the other piece to that is, uh, when we look at the actual expenditures, uh, for the year, we're still targeting, uh, that we have someplace, in the vicinity of around 500 to 600,000. So although we're, uh, we've, uh, we've always targeted, uh, 600,000 as the amount that we would, that we would, uh, try to, uh, give back, uh, if it was possible, uh, as an unreserved fund balance to be consistent or even a little more than past years. Um, we still think we're on track for that. We'll know better as we go through, as we close out here. Uh, we're continuing to close out in the next couple of weeks, the remainder of our purchase orders and to, at that, that particular point in time, you'll see the encumbrances go, go down significantly because we will, we'll have finished out all of our payroll. For the year as we closer to the end. So the, at the, at the time that we looked at these, uh, these particular numbers, there was still a significant amount that was encumbered, uh, by payroll. And then we tried to project out what the, what other things that, that we're going to need that we see going forward. We've had a lot of expenditures that were directly related this year, um, to the COVID-19, uh, piece. We are going to be able to get reimbursed, uh, for some of those expenditures. So it's just a matter of, of, of the timeline and in what particular year will they, will they occur? So, uh, as we go forward, uh, the news is still the same as it was, uh, a couple of weeks ago and, uh, uh, we feel pretty good as to where we're going to end up. And we think that, uh, we'll be able to achieve all the things that, uh, at least we had in mind to get done, uh, and that we were able to. So with that, uh, if there are any questions, I certainly would be happy to answer.
Looks like there are no questions on that aspect, Dave. I think we can.
Would you like me to continue to the?
Yeah. Thank you for your report.
Perfect. Um, and we'll continue to keep you updated as we go forward here, uh, as we make the transition. When Janet comes on board on July 1st, she's privy to all of this as we go along. So, uh, we've been doing some transition days as we speak. So this here won't look foreign to her. She's very familiar with it and we'll work, uh, we'll work for a seamless transition, if you will. The two bids that we're, uh, talking with tonight, I think the first one was the storm, uh, the, the stormwater bid. In, in both of these bids, uh, I'll speak, uh, directly to two of the, to the two, we only received, uh, one bid and that's not, uh, in this particular case, uh, it, I'm, I'm not surprised. The stormwater bid is, uh, is something that goes along with your, uh, construction. Really what it amounts to is that you have to ensure that, uh, any of the, uh, surfaces that have been created. Asphalt, roofing, all that good stuff, that water has a place to run, if you will, in a controlled atmosphere. And there's regulations in the state. Uh, so Greg Marlowe's put this out to bid. We did receive one bid. Uh, it also includes in the bid, not only the testing and so forth, but they also have to make sure that there's nothing, they have to clean out any of the, um, drains that are being used to get them towards ponding and so forth. And they have to ensure that everything's clear so that stuff does not get backed up in, in a, uh, when there's a lot of water that we're moving. So we received one bid. Uh, that bid was, um, from stormwater mon- maintenance and inspection and it's, uh, it's a three, it's a three-year bid. Uh, year one is $13,200, uh, and then years two and three are 11, 5 and 11, 5. And I think the reason for it in the beginning is they're ramping up in the initial, uh, in the initial year. And then after that, it's more of a maintenance item as we go forward. So it would be my recommendation that, uh, you accept that, uh, and it is part of your budget going forward into next year. So it's something that, uh, was budgeted for.
The, um, thank you for that, Dave. Just so folks know, who, um, may not have been in tune to all the building committee meetings we had, but we, we discussed this. It's, uh, not the most exciting part of the project, but a very useful one underneath the elementary school parking lot. And also under the high school parking lot and on the other side of the street from the high school, there are, there are a system of storage tanks to control runoff. So you don't get flooding. Basically, uh, I'm not doing the engineering justice, but the, but the water flows from the, from the property and from the roofs into those uh, massive tanks and it's allowed to, um, flow slower out through, um, you know, the, the, your natural drainage system. But, um, it can become clogged and, uh, then you'll have flooding and there's an annual maintenance aspect to those. And I, I gather, Dave, that's, that's what these bids address, so.
Yes, you're, um, much more, uh, in tune to that, uh, Mike, being on the building, uh, committee. So, uh, that would be exactly, uh, as you stated, exactly what's happening.
Dave, this is Gary. Um, after year three, do we need to get a new contract or is it something? Is this the analysis that's part of the first three years? Or is it handled by the town, for instance, after, once this contract expires?
I think that you will have, uh, have ownership of this contract. You just rebid it every three years. That would be, uh, that would be my assumption in this. I, I don't think the town takes this over. I think this, uh, this would be part of the school district budget going forward.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for Dave on that, uh, on the stormwater bid? Maybe we can, uh, address the, the elementary school bleacher bid, Dave, and then, uh, we can, uh, take action on those?
Certainly. Um, the elementary school bleacher bid is, uh, is, there was only one bidder, uh, as I stated. These are portable bleachers. These can be moved in and out. Uh, they're not, uh, they're not fastened, if you will. They're manufactured by, uh, a company, uh, called Hussey. And, uh, they've been in this business for quite some time. The actual vendor that's, uh, that we would be purchasing them through would be the Robert Lloyd Lord Company. Uh, the total cost for these bleachers is 14,685. And this money is coming out of, uh, it's not coming out of your, um, regular budget. It's coming out of warrant. It's part of the warrant article five that was approved in March.
And, and also to refresh people's recollection, this, this was an item that was, um, considered early on in the project. It was put on the ad opnet list as to see, um, how things played out in the budget. And, um, uh, last fall was decided as a, as a, as a, uh, necessary element to sort of finish things out as the budget became clearer. And, um, it was in a warrant article. Any questions on the, on the bleachers? If anybody, Gary, you probably don't, but in doing sports in the, at the elementary school, that these are kind of, these are pretty necessary. You go in there and all the parents are sitting down on the, on the, on the floor and the outside walls. So if there's going to be any, uh, you know, advancement, yeah, these are, these will be really a, a good addition. So, um, any other questions? Okay. If none, I would seek a motion to approve both the stormwater bid and the elementary school, uh, bleacher bid.
I'll second it. Kim Shelton.
Move, Gary, second.
Thank you. Um, if there are no further questions, let's do it by a roll call vote. All those in favor say aye. Mike Kenneson, aye.
Elizabeth McKinney, aye.
Kim Shelton, aye.
Here's Watson, aye.
Amy Tilton, aye.
Thank you. That motion passes unanimously. Um, and then next on the agenda is the, uh, splash pad agreement.
What I would offer, what I would like to do tonight is ask if the board not ask, but recommend that the board enable this until, uh, we finish, we were not able to finish up, uh, the joint agreement or the lease agreement as it's called, uh, just to refresh folks, uh, uh, on this project, there's a splash pad, uh, that's being, done between the land, between the two schools. Uh, we have to have an agreement. Or the town has to have an agreement with us. And so we thought that we might, on an outside chance, have that ready to go tonight and unfortunately it's not ready to go.
Thanks, Dave. I, um, I had looked at the, uh, the, the joint agreement that's in the materials. And I would just start out by saying that a day like today reminds us that the splash pad is probably a good idea for kids. It's, uh, it's something they've been talking about for a long time. And some things that, that, um, you, you may address, I guess, with that, that contract that's in the materials, I, I, I was reading through and first of all, I just wanted to make sure that our attorney has looked that over. Ultimately, before the, the boards asked the vote on it, that may have already happened. I just don't know. But there, there were a number of, of questions I had again. You know, personally proving a concept of the idea, I just didn't understand why it would be structured as a joint venture. I understand that the nature of it was, you know, that we would allow, because of our land, we would allow the, the town, in particularly the rec department to, to do this on, on, on school land, which is all well and good. But it didn't seem that the school really has any operational interest, you know, or operational function and all this. So, and, and I know in the law, a joint venture has certain meaning. Somewhat relatedly, I guess, under the indemnity provision, there, there are limits of insurance in there of a million dollars. What I would, I would, my, my thought on this is that in terms of defense and indemnification and hold harmless, that there'd be a clause put in there that that's regardless of the limits of insurance that, that, that the town would hold the district harmless. Then, then I didn't understand why the contract is having the school district purchase workers compensation insurance. Since presumably none of our employees would be involved, or maybe I have that wrong. And I'll, I'll pipe down and maybe you can, or Susan can talk to some of those things.
Mike, I, I also concerned about the amount of insurance. If we're going to both require insurance, it seems like a million dollars is a low, low. I was wondering about that.
So if, if I can comment on this. So when we first, when we first sent this out, I had, and I again came in at a later stage of this project. And I'd asked our attorneys that we're using, which would be Drummond and Woodson, if you, to review this. And in particular, I was working with attorney Matt Upton, who does a lot of this work, very familiar with it. So I had asked him to craft up a this that would allow, the reason we're doing this is because the grant can't be solidified until such time as an agreement of something with regarding the land between the school district and the town. Everything is in place. And so this was the one that was sent to me by our attorney. In the meantime, we had another meeting just today of all the parties involved, including the state, including the rec department, including Fournier and Bill Tappin over in, in the town and ourselves to go over everything. And I think we got a lot clear base and apparently there had been a lease that was done a little differently. So that was part of the reason why I asked to table this. The lease you're looking at is truly from the school district's perspective. And really, we're trying to protect our interests and not have any more liability directed toward us than is necessary. However, there is another lease and that, that really was why I asked to table this. A lot of the questions you're asking are still pertinent, very, you know, how much insurance? What's our exposure and, and all that good things? And, you know, we saw a lot of things in that initial lease in respect to policies that cover us in the schools. And those extend to land that we still have and, and being used for public use. So the way it, it has been left, Mike and Gary and Rem and the board is that attorney Rattigan from, for the town and attorney Upton on, for us are putting together and working with what is necessary to put this together in a, in a lease and or a joint agreement to make sure that it works for all parties included. And it works for the state so that we can access the, the funds needed to start the construction of the splash pad. In addition, there were some couple of boundary issues we discussed today and so forth. So that's all thing. But rest assured, no matter what happens, it comes back to you at some point to re-reviewed. And we will get it out in ample time so that, that you folks will know. And in addition, it will also, it will also come with a recommendation from your attorney when it does come. So that you'll know that, that, you know, that everything has been covered and that it's, the recommendation would be to, to go forward with it. You'd know it, it is, it meets whatever we have from a legal standpoint.
Thank you, Dave, for that clarification. Appreciate it. Any other questions on that? All right. Well, thanks, Dave. Then I, I guess the next item on the agenda is the school board summer schedule. Let's do that.
Yes. So typically, school boards go into summer recess and, and then come back to begin doing business before the school year begins. So we just wanted to get a sense of when we might be able to schedule those meetings now before we go into the recess. Given all that's going on, remote learning and the opening of school next year, there could very well be some policy changes and adjustments to the handbook that we'll need to make over the summer. And that would require, you know, the board to meet. So I'm going to suggest that maybe we schedule one meeting for the end of July. And, and then schedule our August retreats now so that we can get them on our calendar. And then I can have Patty make arrangements for the retreat. And we can make sure that we can meet and have a forum to continue to do some business during the summer. And as part of that, there are a couple of policies, of course, you've already approved, allowing me to continue to hire the remaining staff for the year. And, and I'll continue to do that. And at the next meeting, of course, I'll follow the same procedure we followed up to, till this point. And, and you can confirm the nomination at, at the next meeting. So that, that part's in place. But I, I did notice that there's, there's two policies that we would need to have a similar waiver for in order, in order for us to continue to conduct business during the recess period. And, and those two policies I've listed later on in the agenda under action items, but it really boils down to two. One is there's a policy on resignations. And it states in short that the school board will not accept resignations after employees have signed their commitment to work with us for the upcoming year. And until we find a replacement and then until and unless we find a replacement. So we have two resignations before us right now, but I haven't found the replacements. So therefore I can't accept the resignations. And so it would just be a waiver of that policy so that once I get people lined up, that on the, on your behalf, I can write a letter accepting their resignation and you won't have to me to do that. That's one. And the second one is just under DJE items one E and F. There's just one little piece on those bidding requirements that I was hoping that you might waive so that on your behalf, I could enter into contracts. And again, we do the same thing as we do when we're hiring now. I would bring them before you and then you can, you'll see them after, afterwards, like we do the hiring. But we would follow the same protocol for those contracts as we do for the employee contracts. But that would allow us to continue throughout the summer, you know, to award contracts as we, as we get them queued up and Dave bids them or Janet bids them. And then I could do that on your behalf. So those are the two summer policy waivers and that relate to the summer boards, summer, summer board schedule. So maybe we could look at our calendars, if everybody has it handy.
I'd be personally inclined to continue having meetings throughout the summer, even if they're just a short fifteen minute meeting so that we're available should anything come up, given the, the kind of the COVID pandemic situation we're in now, seems to me that it makes more sense to have us be available and then have a short meeting rather than take the summer off.
Well, here's, here's the good news, Gary. There's no good news. I, I've done this for three summers in a row. Most of the summers you have off. I'm burnt out. I'm done. And I think having three weeks off, if Susan needs us, she can find us, we can have an emergency meeting, but to be able to spend time with our families and to just not have to be on a computer for a while will probably do all this the world of good.
I, I understand we normally have summers off, but we're in a bit of a.
No, we haven't had them off though in four years.
We have not?
No, we've been doing building projects.
Gotcha.
You know, I would say this too. I mean, I, Gary, I appreciate your notion of, of, of having us being there. I think we can still do that, Gary. You know, if Susan needs us, we can call a meeting with proper notice. And we can, we can do that. But it's not as if we're really having it off because we're all on these committees or subcommittees for the, you know, for the, for the re-entry or reopening, if you will. We're all going to be putting a lot of effort into that, I think, over the next month. I think one of the thoughts is, is just try to eliminate a couple of meetings if you don't need to have them. And as you say, Gary, if we do need to have one, we can make ourselves available. Any other thoughts? Susan, what, what were you thinking in terms of July?
What I was thinking is sometime between Monday, the twentieth and Friday, the twenty-fourth. And I don't know if there's a day that's better, maybe the twenty-third. We typically have our meetings on Thursdays.
That would probably be safe because then we wouldn't be running afoul of any other meetings in town.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was my, that was my inclination, Susan. And I can be available that on the twenty-third if, if everyone else can.
I can, this is Amy. I can be available that day.
Okay.
Would we have it at five or would we do it at seven?
Um, I think we can do it whenever. I mean, you could have it during the day for them, whether others are available. I don't know what people's schedules are.
I, I, I kind of like five. Want to stick with that?
Yeah.
People are working and they want to watch it. Typically, they could be available around that point. That work, everyone?
It works for me.
Yes, five o'clock works for me.
Okay. And then shall we look in August?
You just, you want to do the thirteenth and the twenty-seven?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. In August, are we doing the retreat, you said, or?
Yes, typically we would do a retreat in August. Where we do some processing of things, start to talk about goal setting. We'll review the goals that we set for this year and then start to, sometimes we'll take, you know, more than one retreat, but to do that, but we usually would have at least one in August.
Okay.
So we could do that if we're going to do a retreat. We, we're not going to have a whole lot, I'm not going to have a whole lot of business because I'm taking my vacation from the twenty-fifth until, when is it? Until I'll be returning on the tenth, Monday, the tenth.
Okay. So would we do the retreat during the day? Is it, and how long is it for usually?
Like three hours, Amy. I mean, that's about all anybody can really be fresh for, you know? After the three hours, you kind of start to fade. I do anyways, but. And then again, if we, if we need more time, we can always schedule another one.
So.
I think, maybe in years past, I can't recall, but my, my gut is that we did bid one of those on the weekend. I, I maybe want to try to avoid that if we can. So families, you know.
I think, Mike, I think last year, and you can tell me if I, I think we met a couple of evenings around a dinner situation. And I think we got some good, we had one, we did have one in Susan's office on a Saturday.
Yes.
And then a couple more productive ones in the evenings. I think it was a Saturday morning from maybe eight to ten or eleven or something. And then maybe five to eight or something for a couple of evenings, if, if I recall correctly.
Yeah, that's, that's bringing it back to me, Kim. You're right. And, um, so does it make sense that we schedule perhaps three dates? And if we don't need, say, the last one, that we just don't meet?
Yeah.
At least pencil it in.
It's fine with me.
So do you want to just do three Thursday evenings in a row and we can cancel if we don't need to? We'll do the thirteenth.
That, that sounds, that sounds good to me. Maybe the thirteenth, the twentieth and the twenty-seventh. Although I don't know, on the twenty-seventh, I don't know, Susan, if you're going to be in the thick of it with the start of school.
I, I am and teachers will be back by then. So I would say the thirteenth and the twentieth. And then maybe we do one in September like we did the last time.
Yeah. Or, or we could do, we could do a Saturday as much as it stinks, but we could do it in the morning and just kick it out. Like we, let's meet the thirteenth. You know, do some work and then if we have to meet on the, the twentieth and then the twenty-second maybe.
I think we'll be, I, I think if we do the thirteenth, maybe we can, what we can focus on there again is a review of the goals that we, you know, worked on this year. And then we can focus on at least first round of goal setting on the twentieth and then open school. And then finalize them in September. I, I don't know that we need necessarily Saturday.
Good, alright.
I, I think that would. I mean.
Yeah, I'd rather do it during the week.
Yeah.
If we did it.
So August, we're going to do August, the thirteenth and twentieth.
Do people start at four?
And start at four on those days? In the August days?
Start them. Is that good with everybody else or?
Yes. Yes.
Yep, it's fine.
Great.
Okay. I will get Patty hopping on that then. Okay. Thank you. Would you like me to go into the next agenda?
Yeah. Yes, Susan, just to recap. So our next, after tonight, our next school board meeting will be on July twenty-third at five o'clock, presumably remotely, although we'll see, maybe by then, we'll see if we can meet together. We'll hope. And then after that, on August thirteenth and August twentieth, both at four.
And also would like to mention that the, that there's going to be a building committee meeting on July the sixteenth.
Actually, actually, Susan, that's July fourteenth.
Fourteenth?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm looking at June. I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's the fourteenth. It's at five o'clock. And Mark, if, if school board members want to join and, and, you know, us and, and do a tour of the building, is certainly welcome to too. Just out of caution, we might want to post that as a gathering of the school board. So just let us know in advance if you guys want to do that.
The fourteenth, Mike?
I'm sorry? Yeah, the fourteenth at five o'clock. And, and while I'm on that topic too, it's, it's a little off the agenda. But the, we definitely want to get the public in there. The, um, we definitely wanna get the public in there at some point. I don't know if we're gonna be able to do that this summer, if we can, we'll do it. I think if it happens, it'll have to be. You know, very structured and, um, with all, you know, safety measures, masks, distance. And all of that, but, uh, you know, um, maybe, um. Um, we, we can talk about that, uh, and maybe if, if we're lucky, maybe do something in August. I know people are itching really to get into the building. I've, I've heard that from several. Um, members of the public that they really, they're just really interested to see what, uh, how things turned out. And I think it would be great to have people in there. We can do it.
Yeah, I, I, I think part of it will depend on to, um, of course, what kind of work we're doing in order to prepare for school. If we're having to do a lot of, you know.
Right.
Uh, little, we, you know, little construction to add, add classrooms or. Or signage or whatever, um, so.
Yeah.
It's hard to tell, but we, we certainly will have a better idea when we meet in July, what, how things are shaping up.
Right.
But.
Okay. And then, Susan, you gave us a summary of, of summer school in the packet. You wanna discuss that a little bit, or?
Yes, I, um, I just wanted to take a moment to share with you. Um, you know, what summer school is and, you know, what we're doing this year. It's a little bit different than what has. Taken place the last couple of years, and so I just thought it, you know, warranted a, a little mention. So, um, always you have what's called extended year programming for students on IEPs. To ensure continuity of learning through the summer, so they don't, um, uh, regress. Uh, it's, that program is really about maintaining skills, not learning new skills. Um, and so, you know, Erica and her staff have, have worked really hard to, um, you know, identify and work with parents. Um, um, to identify, you know, student needs, and that program will still be offered. Uh, given, um, the current rules, um. You know, most school districts have gone to a remote model, so that's different than what would typically be in place. But we would still be running summer school in the same way from, from, uh, uh, July sixth until, um, the end of July. Um, so it doesn't, it doesn't go on and on and on. Um, everybody will get a break between now and, and when that begins. Uh, the second one is, of course, credit recovery, which was approved in the budget this year, which has not been offered in the last couple of years, and so if students. Are not able to, uh, successfully complete a course. That's a, it's not any course, but it would, it would be a core course. Um, that they would be offered the opportunity to make up that course during the summer. And so we call that credit recovery. Um, and so we've been working to see, you know. Where the needs are there, and we would like to be able to offer it in all four, core subjects. However, we have not been able to find an instructor for math or science. So, uh, we've advertised, uh, three times. We don't have anyone internally that is, um, uh, able to do that. So we've advertised it outside twice, and we'll continue to try to find somebody between now and then to, to do that. Otherwise, obviously, we wouldn't be able to, uh, offer that. Uh, the third piece is, um, competency. I would say more competency recovery. So we know that as a result of this pandemic. Uh, when we, when we made this shift to remote learning, that, um, we identified. What we call power standards and competencies that we wanted students to be able to master. Or become proficient at between the, you know, in the fourth quarter or in the third trimester. And, um, and so we did an evaluation these last several days, and, uh, some teachers are recommending. At the junior and senior high, at the, at the elementary and the junior high. To, um, offer some instructional services to support kids that have some gaps. And so, uh, this is something that is not, you would not typically find, but given the situation we're in, it's not typical. And so, um, we like to provide those services to, um. Students. Now, it's not mandatory, again, just like credit recovery is not mandatory, we can offer it to parents. If parents are interested, um, what we did is we sent out a note to staff. Uh, explaining, um, exactly what you see here. And we have a number of staff that are willing to work with, with students over the summer. During the summer school period, again, it wouldn't be starting now, it would just be the month of July, basically, to help, uh, you know, them. Learn, uh, master, or at least become proficient in the competencies that they missed. Uh, so, uh, letters went out from the elementary school to parents, um. Uh, not all parents, again, this is at the recommendation of the teacher, um, to offer this to them. And, uh, a letter, similarly, we'll go out to middle school parents next week. And then, um, and then we'll match up those, those, uh, faculty members who are willing to work with those kids with. Uh, the students. Um, would like to access those services. So I just wanted to mention it, and as I was going through. There's this policy that you have that's called tutoring for pay. Um, it's tutoring can mean a lot of different things in education. Uh, when I read this policy. Um, I read it, uh, through the lens of, uh, private pay tutoring. Um, pri- private pay tutoring is when a parent would like to have, uh, their student, um, tutored privately. Um, uh, to help them either, uh. Advance their skills or for enrichment, or for, for any, any reasons. Um, and so this policy really is around that, but it's, it doesn't specifically say that, and I just wanted to call it out. That the summer school program is not tutoring, in case somebody was reading the tutoring policy. Um, uh, the difference is, one is generated by interest of parents. The other one here is, is, is identified learning gaps by the educational professionals, and then. Filling those gaps with instructional services. So I just wanted to, uh. Mention that, and I think, um, you know, as we think about some policies that we've come across this last year. Uh, you know, that, um, maybe could use a, you know, and I'm just looking at this with fresh eyes. So just, I think saying that, that this is for private pay tutoring, so that, um. Folks really understand that, that that's what we mean there, and it's not the same as, for example, we have paras and tutors. So we use that term again for instructional services, um, but it's not, it's not this. You know, not what this policy is speaking to. So I just wanted to mention it because, uh, I thought it would be important. To point that out, um, in case, you know, you were looking at. At the two and wondering if there was a relationship between the two.
Susan, if we're unable to, um, uh, locate math and. Is it gonna have to? Some additional work at the beginning? Folks where they, the students where they need to be?
Well, i- at the high school, Mike, it's, it's different because, uh, there's prerequisites. You know, and I think we, we talked about that earlier, how, you know, students can't take English one, two, and three, or. Or, or grade nine, ten, and eleven, because there's a sequence to the learning. There's a vertical growth that you're looking for. So, um, many of, many of the high school courses are like that, some, some are not, but mostly in core subjects. They are, you're trying to advance the knowledge and skills of students. So having, the idea here was that, that we wouldn't put students in a position where, um, they were trying to take. A higher level course when they weren't proficient at the lower level course. Um, there can be other ways, ways that you have addressed this in the past, was to have kids take V-Lax. Of course, you know my feelings on that. Um. Uh, not, I don't feel that that, one, it's not aligned to, uh, what the teachers in Newmarket are teaching. And so, uh, it, it, it naturally provides kids with a gap if they're trying to transition. Out of a Newmarket curriculum into a V-Lax curriculum and then back. So, uh, but it could be an option, um, there, uh, you know, e- each kid is in a different situation. There, there's some situations where a kid misses a competency or two. Yes, of course, we can close that gap, no. You know, by providing it, you know, some additional services, similar to how we're doing the middle school, right? So we could do that. Um, in other cases, if the kids just have not, uh, passed in any way, shape, or form a class, then they'd have to retake it. You know? Uh, so if it's a couple of competencies, we can, we can build a gap, and if it's, uh. Missed, um, then a student would have to retake a class before they could move on to the next.
Su- Susan, this is Amy, I have a question. In, um, the three groups of students that you identified, uh, for summer school. In the third one, um, where it's not mandatory, do you know, do you have numbers of how many children would be invited? For that, from each school? Do you, do you have an idea?
I, I don't yet, Amy, because, uh, teachers just left yesterday, and so we have all of this information they left for us. And so Debbie at the elementary school and Jenna, the, the, um, high school. Are working to pull all of those pieces together. I know some letters went out to parents. Because we've been doing this all week, you know, as we knew, we sent some out, but I don't know the total numbers. But I'm happy to let you know once, once I get that information.
Sure, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, Susan, I was just wondering, um, regarding that third element, uh, again. I know, I'm assuming a lot of the kids who didn't meet the targets. Or a fair number of kids who didn't meet the targets probably just didn't attend. Um. Or weren't able to attend classes or encouraged to. Is there, are we doing anything other than sending letters out to kind of encourage these kids to? Engage?
Yeah, we have, uh, yes, we make phone calls. We've, we've tried it, uh, in, in any way we can, um, to try to get students engaged. But you're right, Gary, I mean. Before we went out on, um, remote learning, there were kids that were disengaged then, you know? And, and there's a lot of, uh, effort that's put into trying to find a hook. We call it finding a hook for the kid, finding a way in. How do we bring kids in? The door, you know, if we can get them in the door, usually you can, you can connect with them, and sometimes. Uh, if, if, if a student's disengaged, and they're disengaged over a period of time, getting a hook is hard. And one of the challenges that we have. Um, here is that, because really so much programming was outsourced to V-Lax. Lot of kids got disengaged. Um, and, uh, and, and so I think it's gonna take us a little bit of time to recreate excitement and add programming. Um, in order to be able to, to really, uh, uh, get kids excited about, um, participating. But, yeah, a lot of effort has been, been put into, to trying to get the kids, um, back, you know, back in the fold. Um.
Great.
But there's only so much we can do, you know?
Yeah, no, it's good to hear, I just, there's something, yeah. I just don't.
Yep, we call, we call, we try to find somebody that the kid really has connected with at the school and, and have them. Uh, if, if that doesn't work, then the administration calls, um. And, uh. You know, sometimes it's a coach will try to have call, wha- wha- whatever ways that we can, we can. You do.
Any other, um, any other, um, questions or thoughts on, on the summer school program? Okay, um, are there any other matters that the board would like to discuss?
Hey, um, yeah, Mike, I do have, um, one, two items, actually. Um, one, I was perusing the, uh, policies, uh, a week or so ago. And I found a policy I think we may have missed during the principal hiring, uh, policy CFA. So I just wanted to make the, uh, board aware of that. Um. And the other item I had was, um, I was wondering, I was watching the, uh. Town council meetings last night, and they're talking about, um. How it's, they're not really gonna go have in-person, uh, meetings because of limitations and spacing and social distancing. Uh, so it occurred to me that the cafeteria may actually work out well for that. I wonder if we should, um. Speak to the town administrator about that and consider using that ourselves.
It's funny you should say that, Gary. I had a conversation yesterday with, uh, councillor. And Chair, Tony Weinstein, and we talked about that very thing. Um, and, uh, I hadn't yet had a chance to run it by Susan, because I, I'll, I'll probably get, uh, you're probably part of the same answer. Depends on what's going on in there, but it may be, it may be an i- an idea. What, what has to happen, though, if, if we, first of all, if by guidelines we're able to meet there, you know, meeting enough people. Um, I, I know that the, the guidelines have been lifted a little bit. It used to be ten people, or more than ten in a room. What we need to make sure, though, is that, that if the public wants to attend, that there's room for everybody. Um, and it may even make sense to move it to the gym in that case, and that, and, you know, what's the likelihood that you're gonna fill the gym? And if you do, well, you could probably deal with that, um, in some, some fashion, but. I, I, I don't know about the rest of you, but I'm kinda sick of these, I like, I like everyone, but I'm kinda sick of these meetings. Uh, on Zoom, you know, it's just really tough to carry on a conversation. Um, so, I, I raised that with Tony. We're meeting, um, Tony, uh. And I, as chairs, and Susan and Steve are meeting on July seventh to discuss that. And also to discuss the position, the joint facilities position as well. So it's, it's a really good point. I, I'm, I'm itching to get back in person, even if I have to wear a mask.
Yeah, me too.
Any other, any other items the board will discuss? Okay, um. Susan, um, we should, uh, go through the action items now unless you have anything else.
I don't, Mike.
Okay, so, um, may I, um, on action item number one, uh, the minutes, uh, I'd seek a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. Both public and non-public.
Second, Gary Swanson.
Motion by, just any second by Mr. Swanson, and again, those are for the June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, public and non-public minutes. Are there any edits or revisions?
Me.
Carry none, uh, by roll call vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Mike Kennison, aye.
Elizabeth McKinney, aye.
I don't know where Kim is.
Says she's there, Gary Swanson, aye.
She, she's there, I'm looking at her, but she's frozen, her screen's frozen.
Amy Tilton, aye.
Let's give her a second, she's had to log on and off a couple of times here. Another reason to meet in person.
I was just gonna say that.
We have a, we have a, uh, enough votes for that, so let's move on. Uh, hopefully Kim can rejoin us. Uh, that motion passes, uh, by four votes. Um, and, uh, Kim, Kim had to, uh, Kim, uh, had a technical issue, so she'll be hopefully with us. Um, the next item up is the approval of the manifest. Does anybody have that right in front of them? I know Teresa sent us to it, sent us just before the meeting.
I'm gonna get it on my phone, because I don't have it.
Would you like me to read it?
Hi, Bob.
Sure, Susan, I, I just don't have the amount right in front of me.
I, I found it. Okay.
Kim's back for us.
I'll make.
I apologize, I'm, I'm having major tech problems, so I apologize.
No problem. Um, Kim, do you happen to have the manifest in front of you?
I think Amy said she does.
Oh.
Yeah, I got it.
Amy's, okay. Well, somebody, somebody, uh, make a motion and, uh, hold the manifest.
I'll make a motion to approve the manifest from 6/18/20 and the amount of 873, 483,027 cents. Did I say that wrong? Um, payroll was two, almost 270,000 and accounts payable was 605,000 approximately, a little more.
I'll second that, Gary Swanson.
Okay, uh, all those in favor, uh, by roll call vote. Mike Kennison, aye.
Elizabeth McKinney, aye.
Kim Shelton, aye.
Gary Swanson, aye.
Amy Tilton, aye.
Okay, that motion passes unanimously. And, um, the last, uh, item we have, like, action item we have is item four. It's the summer, uh, policy waiver, uh, which Susan's already discussed. It's, I'd entertain a motion to, and somebody should just mention the policies in particular, uh, motion to waive those policies for the, for the summer period.
I had a question on the bidding requirement one. Um, so we, our, our, our amount is 2,500. If it's, if it's over 2,500, that's where, normally we have to correct.
If it's over, I, and Amy, if it's over 2,500, it has to go out to bid. If it's over 10,000, the board has to approve it.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah.
So we're gonna waive, if something is over 10,000, we're gonna waive that so Susan can approve it, basically?
Yeah, I'll do that on your behalf. So Amy, the way the policy is written, the business office takes care of all of that. And then, um, on your behalf, I will, um, accept it and award it so that we can get these projects that, uh, were listed. You know how Dave gave you a whole list of the.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's just to do the work that was approved at town meeting and the thing like, and all those things, yeah.
Okay, thank you. You cleared that up. Thank you. Okay, so.
We can put that, um, policy in, um, in, uh, sort of on our list of ones we may want to review again on a, on a different issue. The, the, the amount of 10,000 is, 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 if you look at most, uh, districts are sized, is a little antiquated. It's kind of, I think most districts right now are around 25,000. And, uh, but we, that's something maybe we can revisit, um, you know, uh, if, uh, in the fall. So we don't need to be, you know, tied up with, with smaller items and that, you know, the, the school's not waiting on us, or the district isn't waiting on us. Just, just make your sense. Um, any other questions on those?
I, I guess I would just be hesitant on what items, um, giving your authorization to, uh, purchase over 10,000. Just given the concerns I have about, um, any extraneous spending that we can, uh, limit that's not COVID-related or will directly affect, uh, the restart of school.
I think, Gary, I can't name them because I don't have it memorized off the top of my head, but there were a number of, of, uh, of warrant article items I know for sure that likely be over, um, over that amount, over the, over the minimum amount. And maybe Susan can speak to what other, um, in particular that may come up.
Yeah, they were really all facility-related things that were previously approved. Some are finishing up building project-related things, um, and things that had already been in the queue. I can't, I, I honestly, I'm so tired. I, I I can't recall last meeting the list, but we went over it pretty extensively. But we're, we're not doing any extraneous purchasing of anything. We just want to be able to complete the projects that were already approved, you know? We're not, that's why, you know, we're being very, believe me, I'm very conservative in, um, in what we're doing, which is why we have over, you know, probably close to 700,000 we're gonna have in our fund balance when, when we leave, uh, the year. So, um, any way that we can, I'm not, uh, about being frivolous in spending, you know, unnecessarily. Um, but we do want to finish up some of these things because with facilities, the summertime's the only time you really have to get a lot of this stuff done. So, and we will have expenses next year for COVID. There's no question about it. And, and, and what we hope is that to some degree that, that we'll be able to save money in some places, uh, to offset the increases in areas where we, we didn't have any funding for right now. But we'll, we'll find out all of that together.
Hey, I make a motion to approve the summer policy waiver. Mike, what do you want, do you want me to say the policy number? G, C, Q, C? Resignations, D, J, E, 1.1 and F bidding requirements. And.
Second. Um, there was also Elizabeth, just to add to your motion, there's the hiring of personnel, allowing Susan to hire personnel during the summer. And then we can come back and, um, you know, approve nominations. She can hire them, though. You wanna, I, you wanna add that to your motion?
Yes, and hiring of personnel during the summer.
Did everybody catch all that?
Yes.
First second?
I'll second it, Amy.
Any further discussion? If there's none, uh, all those in favor by roll call vote, please say aye. Mike Kennison, aye.
Elizabeth McKinney, aye.
Kim Shelton, aye.
Gary Swanson, aye.
Amy Tilton, aye.
Okay, um, I think that's it for our action items. We do have reason to go into non-public, um.
Wait, hey, Mike, you do the donation?
Yes, there's, there's a donation. I can't find it. I'm somewhere, but I.
Good catch.
I can't find it, but I can tell you what it is. You can't find it either?
I, I got, I got it right in front of me. It's, it's a donation, um, from the Newmarket Community Education Partnership, um, in the total amount of $1,150, um, for two purposes. And, uh, it's, it's the 750, uh, to the lead to good for violence program, um, um, that Officer Nick Drew, um, oversees. Uh, I don't, I gotta honestly say, don't really know. I think he might have presented on that to us at one point. I don't really recall all the details of it. Maybe you know more about it, Susan. And then there was $400 for, um, theater performance, um, requested by Doug Webb. And, um, as, with all donations, we need to vote, uh, to accept those. So I'd seek a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the check for $1,150 from NECP.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, again, as we say many times year to the N-E-P, um, for their work. If there are no further comments, uh, all those in favor by roll call vote, please say aye. Mike Kennison, aye.
Elizabeth McKinney, aye. He might be gone again. She's having technical difficulties.
She's there. Gary Swanson, aye.
Amy Tilton, aye.
Oh, there she was. Did you hear Kim?
She's, I heard her say aye, um.
I did say aye. I apologize. I don't know what's going on with my text tonight.
All right, we'll, we'll put in an IT ticket for you. Hey, uh, Amy, thank you for catching that. I totally missed it. So I, now I, now I think we're done, action items. But we do have reason to go into non-public pursuant to 91A colon three, uh, Roman one E, uh, if I could seek a motion to that effect. Appreciate it.
So moved, Kim Shelton.
Second, Elizabeth McKinney.
Um, let's do it by roll call vote. Again, Mike Kennison, aye.